Okay, at this point, we're ready to, I think Pete, I saw you come in. All right, so we're gonna move on to a Clifton Fest 2015 update from Pete Schneider.
You can be on here, we got it. Like, wanna copy me, or put over there?
To your hand.
I don't have my.
What do you want next?
Put you on there.
Thanks for having me. Just Tony mentioned, my name is Pete Schneider, and we're here at Clifton Town, Clifton Town meeting, CBPA, a number of other organizations up in the area. Putting together Clifton Fest, which this would make it number four, I believe.
Yeah.
We've been doing this for quite a while, is that correct, Jim? Long enough to get out of preschool. Wanted to come up before you folks as quickly and run through a fairly quick presentation to give you an update of where things stand. There was a blessing discussion, there's some concerns about whether this was going to happen this year or it is. It's gonna happen, there's gonna be a few changes that you're gonna see that'll walk through here in just a few minutes, but on the whole, Clifton Fest is gonna continue on as it was and continue to be the arts and music festival that we're going to be starting now. So, where we are currently is probably best framed by giving you kind of summary of where we ended last year, so walking through the 2014 summary. The official estimates that we received, the official estimates that we received from the officials, from the city of Cincinnati and the police that were on scene, was that we saw 28% increase in attendees over 2014. So, we were up right around the 11,000 participants, made it 11,000 members, participants and visitors to the neighborhood. We had 46 vendors, we had a huge variety of products and hard offerings, everything from handmade products to productions, all the way through to original paintings, sculpture. 82% of the vendors that we had last year were returning, so if you think about that in terms of how well they did the first year, first couple of years, that's a pretty good indicator that they all wanted to come back. And as things are rolling this year, they're also showing a similar pattern. The entertainment was very broad ranging. The group did a very good job putting together a solidly mixed bag, everything from the bands that were on the two stages that we had throughout the year, throughout the weekend, to the ad hoc and the buskers that showed up and went up again and participated and did a lot of the street performance for us. The activities that Lucian put together for us over across at the Plaza were, again, was a big head. Yoga and meditation was very, very popular on Sunday morning. The 5K race, Alexis, if I remember correctly, we were all the way close to Dublin, remember participants in the 5K year over year from last year, so we're also expecting probably not 100% or 90% increase, but again, a large increase in number of participants there. Big band, classic rock and reggae, the big band was, I'd say probably, I'm making myself old, but I liked the record best. Feedback that we received onsite during the weekend and after the event itself was consistent, there was a solid appreciation for the variety of the entertainment and the balance of, the balance of the types of entertainment that we had there. The feel of the event was very relaxed and very comfortable. There wasn't this rush to get something done, there wasn't the push, you know, this band, come see this, come see the other, but it was very, very relaxed. We had other events going on in the city of that weekend, if you remember it too, we did a punk weekend, and again, this year it's also a mini punk weekend, so all the feedback we had was, this was a good counter to that. Think about it, Thursday, Friday, let down, everybody let down, and had a great time at midpoint, you know, Saturday and Sunday, able to mellow it out and come have a good time at Clifton Fest. And this was, you didn't have to pay for this. One of the things that we did receive a good bit of feedback on, we wanted to have a second beer outlet up at the main stage. Tried to do that last year, didn't work out. It helps logistics a little bit, and we did consistently hear a request for more street food. By that, we mean things that people can walk around with a beer in one hand and eat from in the other, what you think of as a personal food. Restaurants were really positive, they were very supportive of the event, yeah, tried to grab as much traffic into the restaurants as we could, but again, that makes it more difficult when they're sitting down trying to serve meals as opposed to serving something that we could get out when they're coming in. There were some of the restaurants up there that weren't actually very good, you know, everybody knows Bob Baller, who sells out his chicken and dog, I don't know, maybe 90 minutes, when he closes it, to, you know, to the end of the afternoon, so you actually have to set your watch, when he closes, go get the chicken, because it's gone, otherwise. And a couple of the Indian places were very, very accommodating as well, had some stands set up right up front of the places, and did a great job, you know, making sure that everybody was fat. So, one of the, a couple of the things that I wanted to add, probably the biggest difference is that you're gonna see from the event for 2014. We were collaborating a lot with CBPA, you know, as much as we're collaborating with the vendors up there, you know, vendors that participate, businesses along the strip are the most impacted, you know, by the events of that event, so they have a pretty big say when it comes on. One of the things that they've asked us for pretty clearly, again, feedback coming in, close the street for one day. We want to be able to return to normal operations as quickly as possible, we'd like to be able to get our businesses back out there on Sunday. So, we heard that, we did, we're gonna retool the event. Ludlow Avenue is gonna be closed Saturday all night. The stage moved in a little bit, the area's gonna be a little more depressed, the stage at this point is targeted to be across, it's a bridge, the old library street, library space, and Ludlow garage, so you can come up, and have warm on, and head back down Ludlow Avenue from there, instead of pushing it all the way out by CBS at Little Drift by Ludlow Section. So, that's gonna help make it feel a little more intimate as well. The vendors that we've worked with, the vendors that we've gotten, you know, signed up so far this year, still very positive, they understand that it's only gonna be one day. The response we've produced, the amount of good we're charging for, so there's a decrease of that. But we're fully expecting as many, if not more, than the number of folks that were participating previously to come back in that. So, I touched on the footprint being adjusted, we are going to use a single stage. That stage is the one that I mentioned previously, we're not planning on using the Plaza stage for any of the music programming, we'll be using Plaza for other programming throughout the weekend, we want to maintain that, we get that as much of a focus as possible. But as I mentioned, look and feel, it's not gonna change. We revised the sponsorship opportunities to reflect that, obviously, if you think about it, with it being reduced in, you know, somewhat reduced in scope, there is no big reduction in cost, some. We're not paying for two days worth of bands, we're not paying for two days worth of engineering, or two days worth of security, but that's really pretty much where it stops, where it goes out from there, the fixed costs that we have, the permits, fees, insurance, in fact, the number of those actually went up. But, you know, the equipment rental, it really doesn't matter if it's there for one day or two days, so our costs didn't change a whole lot. We adjusted where we possibly made that budget. The Clifton Plaza programming, we're, like I mentioned, we're not gonna use the stage, and everything that is over on Diggs Plaza is going to maintain its two-day schedule. I don't have that schedule yet from Parks Department, but they are gonna get that over to even the next couple of months. We have a number of sponsorship opportunities, which I will make this available publicly that anybody wants to see it. We have a number of folks that have already signed up. There's a couple other additions up here that haven't, late day additions that haven't been included in here, and we are expecting a number of the folks that did provide significant sponsorship for us last year, you know, to participate again this year. What I don't have penciled in at this point in time is CBPA or CTM. Second page we got included in there is opportunities for sponsorship in the Beer Garden and just general sponsorship, midway sponsorship. Budget that we put together for this year, we have cut back on several of the expenses. It takes us probably about $40,000 to put the money to the show, with all the bands, insurance, permits, equipment, realm, essentially, everything you see coming out of that, it runs in about, the total expense runs about just under $40,000. With the decreases, we brought it down to $32,405. Now, it does show roughly $5,000 profit for a year, but that, what happens with that, we roll that over to next year's planning. We do make a profit, that gives us the opportunity to roll and start planning activities and booking activities right into next year. That's what we did this year, that's what we're blessed with, the revenue that we received from last year, we were able to start those activities now and make sure that the event was going to be successful and was going to be worthwhile. Some of the budget notes. Again, the first bullet point just kind of echoes what I just walked through. We did have to bring in a couple of professional services, we brought in some folks that recorded the event operations for 2015. Last year, we brought in a music producer, that music producer is going to be back there as well, and we've been, moderately not completely, same thing with even production coordinator. The 2015 budgeting, really, we want to be focused on not just necessarily throwing everything out there and having any opportunity that the area, somebody thinks is a great idea, maybe a great idea, sure, bring it to us and we can explore it. What we want to do is look at the value for what is being spent, that's being brought in, we have to do this essentially, run this as different business. So, the number of the events that we're looking at, the number of components have been focused upon, 100% upon the value that they bring. So, we're looking for additions, we're looking for opportunities to bring in production components that are relatively inexpensive, so that we're not looking at huge financial outlays here over the year. The core neighborhood groups that we got in here, you know, were included from last year, consisted of 55% of the total funding that was required for the event on, that's the contributions that came in from CTM and came in from CBPA. We're looking for a similar contribution percentage-wise for the 2015 event as well. This was the 2014 actual budget, our total expenses were just under $35,000, revenue was just, was just under $49,000, so you can see we did fairly well last year. That money is still sitting in the bank, less a little bit, this already been spent for professional services and some operations fees, we had to pay for tax prep, the state of Ohio, and a couple of other things, so it does. So far, what we have lined up, 2014, I'm sorry, the 2014 major vendors and sponsors from last year, CBPA, CTM, Cincinnati Park Board for their efforts on program Diggs Plaza, Gaslight Properties, Dry Health, Howell Animal, excuse me, Howell Avenue Hospital for their participation in that, we had Stainnares Distributing, Uptown Consortium, Emmanuel Presbyterian, and General General. These are the folks that paid us the fuel to run this party last year. That's it, last slide. Any questions?
What are the dates of the year?
25, 26, and 27 of September. Important point, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this. I didn't even know what it's named. The Friday night events, however, they are not going to change, we're still doing the Friday night Plaza Jazz Series, Weight Baker Esme, come back, Sen. Gentleman's gonna listen to three years now, so gets off nice and mellow, ramps up, drag the party all the way through Saturday, coasts down back through Sunday, get the businesses back to their normal operations, and we can still have a bit of a cycle, we say, on the party, out there on Sunday, wrap up in the afternoon. Other questions?
Yeah, I didn't notice in the budget, the money that was carried over from last year that you were spending this year on the budget line item?
Correct, it would be in the 2015 budget.
So, the 2015 expenses don't include the things you've already started to spend?
No, the 2015 expenses do include all expenses that would be incurred to 2015.
Okay, so, you count it, shouldn't you count in the income side the money that you're over? I'm just curious how that shows up.
You're talking two different, two other statements.
Balance sheet.
Balance sheet, yeah, thank you. You're talking the balance sheet versus a budget.
Okay, just I'm not seeing where you're showing the money being spent. You're showing, I'll be honest to you, I won't pick the time out.
No, that's no problem, I mean, if you want to see what the expenses have been, I can give you. Within a order of magnitude of a couple hundred dollars, but I can't spit it out off the top of my head that there is around $14,100 in the budget.
I'm not good for the budget, I'm trying to understand how the budget is, how it's flat.
Purely in a cost, a cost versus a budget, nothing more.
Just to expound a little further, so the intent is not to necessarily apply the revenue or the cash, the reserves, whatever you call it, you have in the bank, to the expenses for this year. You would, probably ideally, you would want to maintain that or even grow that, is what I'm guessing, or maybe I should.
I'd love to maintain that, but I don't want to maintain a huge balance here.
Sure, sure, sure.
What we want to do is ideally roll enough money, make enough money off the festival each year, and that seeds the operations, and if we find ourselves another, you know, another scenario where there's an economic downturn and a number of our sponsors have had to cut like 50%, obviously, we will cut as well, but we still have an opportunity to be available to do the festival. If we were starting at zero basis, we wouldn't be doing the festival, we wouldn't be standing here in front of you, we would have had to have been back in January or February.
Yeah, sure.
We wouldn't have been able to commit at this point to be able to do the festival. Questions? Thank you.
All right, next up, Ben's on the agenda, we've been until long, the agenda. Defining his relationship to Level 21.
Okay, this is the other story. All right, so I'm gonna cover the past and current relationship between CTM and Level 21, some concerns about the relationship, I have a motion for a change in the relationship that we can then discuss as trustees. So, when it comes to the past and current relationship, the keeping at stake about the past is that the Level 21, the sort of phase two of the working group that we first established for, between CTM, CBPA, Uptown Consortium, at the time, was in 2020, to try to manage a contract with Kathleen Norris who developed a study of recommendations for the business district. And so, there was a very format, there was very formality to it with representation from each of the organizations and things like that. Then, after the report was published, essentially, phase two became the Level 21 working group. And with, again, two CTM reps on the board, but part of what has happened too, I believe, is sometimes there's a communication from CTM that sort of blurs the relationship, such as when we say CTM wants your opinion on these logos that were provided for Level 21, I think that can sort of blur, well, are these organizations linked, you know, so there's certain things that I think, in my opinion, were the distinction between the organizations. In some letters, Level 21 has described itself as working committee comprised of representatives from CTM, CUPA, Uptown Consortium, Village, non-Clifton residents, and also coalition of all fundamental civic and business organizations in this neighborhood, which can be implied an influential kind of consensus voice for all of Clifton. And I've heard very recently that Level 21 may be changing some what they want in the relationship in terms of independence from CTM, but I believe we need to be defining today what CTM wants in the relationship. The reasons for concerns about the relationship is basically two, one is that Level 21 will sometimes lobby City Hall on a position, and if there's not clear independence between what we as an organization believe and vote on, et cetera, and our resolutions, and what Level 21 is proposing, it could be possible that people who see those positions misconstrue the position of Level 21 as representing CTM's position. The biggest important example was a letter from Level 21 in December, a zoning letter that included some comments dismissing, this was with regard to, and we had common alignment already, that we supported in general the Woodfield apartment development, but there were also some comments that dismissed some of the concerns of Terrace Avenue residents about the development, which caused those residents to complain to our Housing and Zoning Committee for this letter that the Housing and Zoning Committee had never seen. And there's even some legal action between the Terrace Avenue residents and these apartments, and we were put in a very bad position of looking as if we were dismissing without ever having investigated the Terrace Avenue issues or concerns. And then, afterwards, in January, we had a joint executive committee of the Outbuilding Executive Committee, which was myself as president, and then the Incoming Executive Committee, and one of those agreements was that we would insist as a must that there be no more position papers from the working group, that the working group wouldn't have its own positions that is lobbied for, and Level 21 did not agree to that, and they said they'll send letters, but will not mention CTM in those letters. But the problem is that there's a general perception that gets out there in the community that the organizations are linked and that their viewpoints overlap, then recipients of the letters, we still assume CTM support for whatever position is in there, so that to me is not an adequate solution. And then, although I wasn't there, I believe both Tony Sizemore and Adam Highland were at a zoning committee meeting and had mentioned to me that when Janice Chakel spoke at this meeting, she described herself as part of CTM, which further words of relationship?
She said, "I'm a member of CTM," which is a fact.
A member of CTM.
That is, I was to clarify, you are welcome to go listen to the tapes, but as a broker, I said, "I am a member of CTM."
Okay. Then the second concern, then, and that makes sense, and, you know, again, that's why I prefaced it with, I wasn't there, so I just had to, what I heard from Tony and Adam. But there's also, the second part is, there's a conflict with regard to the goals regarding the grocery store in Ludlow. And I'm gonna share the data, but there's data showing that CTM, the Clifton community and Clifton businesses want a grocery store in Ludlow. There's also data showing that Level 21 leaders have worked against the Clifton Market Grocery in particular to allow development that may or may not include a grocery store. As far as the CTM, the evidence at CTM has consistently shown a position that we should have a grocery store in Ludlow. There were resolutions in 2011, 2012, and 2014 in CTM, the one in 2011 was supporting Keller's, the second one was supporting Gessling, and the third one was supporting anything that will come. So, the first one, when Karen Imbiss was president, one of the items, her name was CTM's goals, promote a full-service grocery store that serves a neighborhood from the Keller's location, whether that is Keller's, when the event, Keller's is unable to reopen another grocery store. And in 2012, when Pete Schneider was president, one of the items in his letter was uncertain, he'll continue to City Hall, so he's even asking City Hall to support funding, he'll continue to support the effort in financing practices that has been recommended for Gessling's market in Clifton. And then in 2014, when I was president, we wrote, "The highest investment use of the property is a full-service grocery retail, the solution could be a grocery chain, independent grocer, or a food go-out, if current buildings replace, solution could be the used property with a minimum of 15,000 square feet of grocery retail." And as far as, what does the community and business, is there data saying that they support a grocery store in Ludlow? The Level 21 did a survey of the community and asked, one of the questions they asked is if commercial development's an option, what kind of services would you wish to see? And it was greater than 70% in favor of food retail for both the residents, and 27 businesses were polled, 26 of them responded, and over 70% said that they wanted groceries, or they wanted food retail. Second question was, if you didn't answer food retail, what kind? And both groups again said, or 70-plus percent said, "Full-service market, like Fresh Market or Fresh Time," which are stores that are equal in size and square footage to the Clifton Market. So, the Level 21 leaders have opposed this only, the only current grocery store option. One of those is a June 15th letter to City Hall from Joyce Rich, CTM representative, one of the two CTM representatives on Level 21, which, among other things, said, "Please do not provide to go out with a loan or any other funding," and that went to the mayor, to city council, to the city manager, just before these groups were evaluating whether to give a $400,000 grant to Clifton Market. And the documents in there, but for the interest of time, I won't open it unless we want to. And then, a second one is a June 14th letter from the other representative, who, in the case of Joyce, she only identified herself as a private citizen, but he identified himself as CTM trustee, chair of the City CTM Business Committee, and founding member of Level 21, which does, again, more blurring, and he said, "The Clifton Market components are a minority of Clifton, they just happen to be very vocal and very organized, and so, resident and community leader, I'm asking to vote against any city funds in support of this role in for this stated project." Then the other evidence, and again, this doesn't mean that they're wrong, it just means that our goals are different. The goals of the community, measured by the survey responses and by the CTM resolutions, are, they want a grocery store. Maybe we're wrong, maybe a mixed-use development and no grocery stores correct, and people have a right to a different opinion, but I'm showing that there's a disconnect between the goals of the Level 21 leadership and the goals that CTM has expressed, and the goals measured by survey results for the residents and for the businesses on Ludlow. And so, there were records from a phone call to Charlie Wemburn's office titled, "Opposition to the Clifton Market," from Scott Crawford, who was founding member of Level 21, and that conversation included, there was an alternative project for the Keller's IGA site that would have created condos, retail space, and more parking, so there was literally an alternative that they were looking at instead of a grocery store on that same space, competing for the same property. And this alternative was never reviewed with the public, no details of what this might look like to try to get public opinion on it, and there was no stated commitment to a grocery store. And then, the last piece of evidence, again, difference of opinion, but showing a disconnect in goals, was from a Nextdoor post in JAM, that, "It seems that the return of the $22,000 square foot grocery drive that will put our smaller stores in jeopardy, along with more study of how this is development, that includes mid-to-high range apartments, blah, 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 we must have a detailed and serious study of what is really needed for a business district within what scale." So, this is the summary of my concepts, and then I go one more slide, which is the motion. Summary of the concerns about the relationship is, I believe that CTM should separate from Level 21 for two reasons, lobbying by Level 21 that it's not subject to CTM review and approval, and two conflicting goals regarding the grocery store, where CTM, the Clifton community, and Clifton businesses have demonstrated interest in a grocery store, and the Level 21 leaders have demonstrated interest in stopping Clifton Market, meaning if there is no grocery store alternative. And then this would be my motion. Now, a lot of you have been to some of these meetings recently, have seen great things coming out of Level 21 for parking solutions, for beautification on the street, for programming on Clifton Plaza, music, and other things like that, and part of what has held us back from pushing back. And part of what has held us back from pushing back before on the relationship is we thought, how can we distance ourselves from something where there's so many good things that that organization also does, even though we had some concerns about governance and lobbying and things like that. But the thought would be, let's allow CTM support for these, for specific Level 21 efforts, maybe even funding things, and things like that that we agreed with, and supporting concerts and advertising things on the listserv and events and stuff like that. But let's eliminate any appearance that CTM is formally connected to Level 21, and that would include these points. CTM is to no longer have official representatives on Level 21. Trustees can volunteer for Level 21, but they do so as individuals. Second, CTM is to avoid any written communication that could create the appearance that the organizations are linked, such as CTM wants your feedback on these logos sent to Level 21, but instead be, Level 21 wants your feedback, and we're providing the communication vehicle for it. It's got to be very clear that it's not our organization that wants it. CTM can still announce Level 21 events, but must word these announcements as if they were publicizing a meeting for a separate organization, like if they were publicizing the CCAC event, or Clifton Community Fund, or something like that. Level 21 is to cease referring to CTM as participating in its organization, including any references to collaboration with CTM or being a working group that includes CTM. And fourth, CTM may still choose to promote or fund Level 21 events and other projects, but would do so in the same way CTM might support CCAC projects, with no suggested overlap between organizations. So that's the motion. Is anyone seconded or pending to be discussed?
I'd like to jump in just real quick, part of the discussion. You're right, we do have a resolution that stands as the best use, or best and highest use for 319 let lows at grocery stores. We decided as a trustee, or trustees, that we can't vote on it because there's a conflict of interest policy that stands with our organization, that so many of our trustees are shareholders, that we can't vote on this because it would be a conflict of interest. I want to make sure we're all aware of that. Anyone who lives in Cincinnati and has a right to their view, that's it. I'm not defending anyone, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. When, if someone lives in the city and wants to write to council, we cannot prevent someone from doing that. And it goes for CBPA as well. If someone, I mean, that's another organization, so I think we're throwing everything in. And I think that Nextdoor posts on Nextdoor, again, I think that's a free forum for individuals. And CTM as an organization does not formally take positions out on Nextdoor. We may advertise events, things like that, as a way to, as a social media channel, but it's not our sounding board for positions. That's really, I just want to hit those main points. I'm ready to hand it over to anybody else.
I just, I'm sorry. I'm kind of...
Check, check, check.
Turn it over. Is it green?
No.
It's off. There you go.
Hello?
No.
I guess I'm just wondering, if really completely pulling out Level 21, why is this a course of action? Regardless of my personal opinion, I think having a diversity of opinion on board is actually critical. And however, I do think that recent events have revealed some probably weaknesses in our bylaws with regard to how that's done, how board members can't express and get strong dissenting, and they should have the right to do so. But I just, as a comment, I'm just, I think it's unfortunate, maybe, if the outcome is we can't participate with each other anymore. I'm fearful of where that leads, because I said, I think some, there have been some very positive events that have come throughout this with Level 21, and I would hate to see that good work not further.
And again, this is part of the reason this was designed to be like, we can support events, we can support things, we can advertise. It's just getting a very clear separation and avoiding any appearance or perception that our positions and viewpoints are aligned.
So on the, on the first point, that CTM is to no longer have official representatives. The language within these slides and in Ludlow 21's communications to council regarding the Gaslight Properties Development, notwithstanding those, I would argue that we have never had official representation. I wasn't a trustee at the time that, that Level 21 formed as a working group. But when CTM has an official representation, that means a few things. One, it means we, as a board, appoint our representatives, and I don't believe that's ever happened. We didn't...
We actually did, in the sense that, yeah, when this, the request was just like we had official representatives on the first working group, which were Joyce and Morgan. And they be the official representatives, and I was president at the time, and the president can appoint, and I said, "Yeah, go ahead."
That seems to me like, that should have been something that should have been re-reviewed when we had our all hands for the current trustees group, to make sure that you have the same...
It was.
Did everybody get my email from Friday? My email on Friday? Ludlow 21 is separating and incorporating. I mean, we can have a vote if we want, but it's already happened. I mean, it's...
That's fine, and I would also say though...
I mean, we can vote on this for whatever purpose, but I mean, Ludlow 21 has already decided to separate and go in separate ways from much of the disagreements that Ben's already outlined.
I think the difference is...
And notwithstanding, I mean, you know, Ben, it's like four people out of probably 15 that are working there, and just like on this board, Level 21 doesn't have complete consensus there either. So it's a little unfair for you to try and say Level 21 is this organization's sole purpose is to lobby against all grocery stores.
I don't think I've ever said that. If I can finish though, I'd also say that if a representative, if you're acting as a representative to a committee, to a working group, then you are not acting on your own behalf, you are not speaking for yourself. So when Mike acts as a representative for transportation, or Adam acts as a representative for housing and zoning, they never take their own positions on these things. Every issue gets brought back to CTM or to a committee and gets voted on, and they speak on behalf of CTM whenever they're doing that. That's what it means to be a representative. If you, you know, you're an individual who is a trustee and is also on another board, that doesn't mean you're a representative. If you're a representative, it means that you're representing CTM.
And this were official representatives, and that first item is no longer to have two official representatives from CTM on the board of Level 21.
Again, there isn't going to be, there are already...
Right, there can be other details of communication and everything that I think we have to establish what we agree with, rather than wait for Level 21 to establish what the relationship is going to be. There's no reason we can't go first.
Realistically, I've been on CTM for four years, so I've been part of the 11, 12, and 14 discussions. The, our involvement in the Level 21 working group is now, now it's called, because it's not what it was called when we started that discussion, was an organic, a very organic organization. That organization has continued in an organic way. We participated through Joyce and Morgan's participation, and in and out, we've all probably been in some of those meetings at one time or another. I feel that, and again, we all have the right to dissent. The decisions made by the whole organization, we're allowed to dissent, and like, just as the Supreme Court, or our representatives are allowed to dissent. I wouldn't be part of this organization if I was muzzled, if I didn't agree with the stance of the organization that's just against common core beliefs. I think this motion is overreaching and not necessary. It's, it doesn't foresee what happens five years down the road, when Level 21's working on something, there's people that we're not even contemplating now. And I think that's overly complicated, simply really because it's just one issue that is very, very contentious, that seems to have to be popping up right now.
My position is that there needs to be some clear defined separation. These are, have grown into, Level 21's grown into its, essentially its own group, it has its own members, its own agenda, and it has its own goals. I hope that the, that the two groups continue to be aligned to do what's best for the Clifton community. But as Morgan says, it sounds like Level 21's kind of come to the same conclusion. CTM is kind of, or at least some of the people who've spoken tonight have come towards that there's going to be a separation. So I think that's in order. I also agree with Mike that there is harm in over-formalizing this, and that it could come back to either give the perception that we have some sort of groups that really are polarizing, and so that's my position. So I think we just need to clarify the rules and move forward as two separate organizations.
I'm concerned about this motion from the standpoint of the future, and there's two parts of the future. There's something that, like Mike Moran said, in relationship to, we don't contemplate what might happen when something formal like this gets passed. But also, I'm concerned that we spent a lot of money on this Level 21 report, and our arm, if you will, to implement things on this report was through our business committee, and the representatives of the business committee go to Level 21 games. And there has been such a, for me, it's kind of amazing, the successes that they've had so far. And now we're effectively saying, that's interesting, but we want to distance ourself from those successes. And what's missing for me on this motion is, then what are we going to do to implement the things from the Level 21 report that we paid for? So it's, this feels like it's halfway there in a variety of things. It doesn't consider the future, and it also doesn't consider that we invested money. We have a lot of people here that give money, and people come to these meetings and they get upset about how we're spending our money and want to know where we're spending our money. And then even within the board, we're always negotiating on where we should spend our money. We spent a lot of money on this, and it cannot go on the shelf. And Joyce and Morgan have been the spearhead of getting things done for CTM, and I don't feel like there's anything in this motion that fills that gap. And I also want to point out that we are trampling on the June agenda items that did not get covered because we went too long on topics, and now we're in July, and I'm concerned that we are running way over time, and I do not want to forego the June agenda topics into August. I really want to hear about some of these things we've been postponing.
Just one quick comment from Nicholas, and then give everybody a couple minutes.
Well, to quote Supreme Court Justice Scalia, "This is pure applesauce." I guess my big question is, I understand where this is coming from, but my big question is, I want to know more about what the next steps for Level 21 is then. If they are going to separate, to what, what's the purpose? What's their agenda? And that way we know if there's avenues for partnership moving forward. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Morgan, since he's representative, if he can tell me what the future of Level 21 is going to be once they officially incorporate.
Yeah, much of what the same as it's already been. I mean, there's parking, there's programming of the plaza, there's the, anything that might have come out of the survey, any number of things that are falling in under the Level 21 report itself. But yeah, it has grown organically, and the group is pro-development, unabashedly. And honestly, I think if you really looked at our bylaws, we should be too. I mean, it says right in our objective, in CTM's bylaws, to grow and develop the community of Clifton. I mean, I really, really think that we, as an organization, need to be mindful of the fact that we're supposed to be doing that, and that's sort of what Level 21 grew into, is to pick that up. And as a bit of a side note too, as an organization, I would be very wary of the fact that there's been two groups within Clifton that have sprung up in the last three years that want to try and tackle these issues. And I really firmly believe that that happens when there's a vacuum. You know, these are issues that we're not taking up and other groups are. Prior to Level 21, prior to Clifton 2020, there was Main Street, there were street skates. There's been a history of things that have popped up in our community, because I don't believe CTM's necessarily taking up the helm on some of this. If I have my druthers, there really only be CTM and CBPA, but there's a need that's currently not being filled, and that's where groups like Level 21 tend to pop up. So I think it's, would be potentially unfortunate to part ways, but I think that's where we are anyway.
One more.
Yeah, Mike. Hello? All right. I have a few things. First, I take exception to Morgan's take on the bylaws. He's said this a number of times, but the actual wording is, "The objective of this organization is to preserve and develop the community of Clifton." Preserve being the first. "The founders of this organization recognize that Clifton is one of Cincinnati's first suburbs and has a traditional charm, and that unique character of Clifton should be left, should not be left to chance." Right. On the contrary, its growth and development should be guided by actively interested residents. But that doesn't necessarily mean over-developing, developing and over-developing, that keep maintaining the charm. And everything I've seen out of Level 21 is something that's...
Yeah, I move to call the question.
Anyway.
I move to call the question.
I would like to...
That's a privileged motion. It stops debate with a two-thirds vote. I move to call the question.
I'm just being silenced then.
What about the audience? Don't we get to say something?
This is a public meeting. This is the Clifton Town Meeting.
What is the, what is my recourse to argue this? I mean, I have a couple things I want to say.
There's a seconded motion on the floor to call the question, which effectively is the end of debate. Personally, I'll tell you the reason I made the motion is, the trustees all know what the bylaws are, they've been posted on the website for five years, and I want to hear about the Transportation Committee, and we're losing time.
No, we're here, we're here. This is about, not you. The issue is about representation.
Okay, so, wait. Okay, so, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Yes. Yes. No. I'm not leaving. No, no, don't leave.
You can't come into a public meeting and use profanity, expect that it's okay.
I think you've heard that word before. Now let's get on with it. We're all here to have a discussion and to say our piece. Now please, let's get on with it.
I have to ask you something, wait.
No, please, no, please, leaving. So let's get on with it.
The meeting is not going to go forward until an individual who's been asked to leave leaves.
I'm sorry, Pete Schneider is no longer a trustee, and he has no stance on this.
All right, I will leave so that everyone can have a chance to discuss this. Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
As a new resident to Woodfield...
I will leave so that everyone can have a chance to discuss this. Thank you, ladies.
As a new resident to Clifton, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear Adam say what he wanted to say.
We have to vote on the call to the question, correct? We have to vote on that first. Let's vote on that.
All in favor to take the call. Yeah, so the motion to call the question is to end debate, requires two-thirds vote of the trustees. It's generally done when debate has gone on for a certain amount of time and things need to progress.
So if we vote no on this, then we continue the debate?
Then we continue the debate.
Seems like everyone up there has voted except this Joe.
Can we vote on this, please?
You can ask him to leave, but that's my point. And if you may ask him if you want, I'll walk out.
The motion on the floor, we have to vote. So please...
We're going to vote on it, all in favor to stop the debate.
I will make this quick. I have over the last year, I've been in different positions in Clifton. I've put up a lot of my personal time to work towards the betterment of Clifton. I have watched members of the Level 21 group continuously try to undermine things that I see that the majority of the community are trying to push for or to continue to do things that put CTM in a bad position. So the relationship is never, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know what the relationship is. At certain times, they say they are part of CTM, sometimes they say they're not. It's whatever behooves them at the time. I'm very frustrated with what is perceived to be some kind of relationship at times and what is perceived to not be a relationship at some times. It doesn't, and they say they're going off. So we're just left to wonder. I mean, I know that two of the, one of our trustees, Morgan Rich and James Teco, met with board members of the Clifton Market months, in the, just a month before they formalized the new version of Level 21, to ask them to not negotiate, discontinue negotiations with Distinct Gasoline and forfeit the contract. So a, so it is, I have, I have other, I have people here that could refute that. I'm just saying that is out of, that is out of bounds of what I think we as an organization should be supporting. I think that that was, that was out of bounds of what anybody on this board, I mean, that's trying to interfere with negotiations is something that we should probably not support.
Individuals are allowed to talk to whoever they want, Adam. Anyone they want, just like you are.
I just, that's, that's it for my comments. I'm just, I've been frustrated by the relationship.
I understand there's a lot of emotion involved in the food market. A lot of people have spent a lot of time, effort, money on the Level 21 group, on the Clifton Market group. I do want to point out that this is not, neither of those organizations, this is Clifton Town Meeting. This is a whole organization. It's great to see 70 people show up. Unfortunately, 70 people won't show up to every one of our meetings. We'd like to see it. We do have a huge other agenda. We have, you know, we've been dealing with transportation issues that continue to be tabled. For that, I would like to motion to vote on the motion.
All in favor to approve the motion as presented up here. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. We are moving on. We are moving on to community reports. Kevin, I'm going to table my, I had some executive, I'll be very quick with my executive updates on recent actions and then I'll move over. We'll go to All-Star Clifton, House Tour. I'll skip House Tour, we'll go to Housing and Zoning. May 4th, we sent a letter restating Best and Highest Issues for 319 Medlo. I attended a City Council Budget and Finance Committee meeting restating the letter. May 13th, I attended the Zoning Varyance Appeals Meeting. June 8th, I attended a meeting between Clifton Market and Mayor Cranley to answer questions about our letter sent. June 10th, I sent a letter to, in support of Vice Mayor Mann's request for NSP funding increases and also to include invest neighborhoods as the administrator. I'll provide those to you. Okay, next up is All-Star Clifton. Thank you.
Hi, Nicholas Holland. So I thought we'd talk about something fun for a change here. Hey, can I get Alexis and Elizabeth up here to meet my Bear White-esque sign holders? So, how about this fancy stuff? So if you were at our last meeting for CTM, you probably saw or heard that Clifton was selected as an All-Star neighborhood. So what that means is that Clifton has the privilege of hosting and doing fun community activities during the All-Star Week in preparation for the All-Star Game on Tuesday night, July 14th. So a committee of Elizabeth, Alexis, Mike from Level 21s, and I have gotten together and come up with some fantastic, fun things for our neighborhood. Now, as far as the activities, most of the funding is coming from the Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau. They allocated roughly $15,000 for activities, for marketing, for tickets to Fan Fest, which is like a, I don't know if you're a baseball fan, like a Red Spess. They called it Red Spess on steroids. And they actually gave us an allotment of tickets, each one is $33, for us to be able to pass out in the neighborhood, ideally to, what they said, quote, needy kids or families. So we've reached out to different businesses, organizations like this one, to be able to pass out these tickets. So we, the point is, they've allocated a lot of money for us to be able to do some fun stuff. So during the week, the very first thing, at the Esquire, we're hosting a baseball movie, Field of Dreams with Kevin Costner. If you build it, they will come. And so it'll be a fun event, I encourage you to be able to attend. Oh, and there's prizes, there will be prizes, Fan Fest tickets. And they're also doing a costume dress-up. So if you dress up in your best baseball or vintage baseball attire, there's going to be prizes and awards and fantastic, fantastic fun for everybody to show up. So number two, July the 11th, this one's my personal favorite. We are hosting a vintage All-Star baseball game. So what does that mean? There is a, apparently a very avid vintage baseball league here in Cincinnati. So it's a bunch of guys who play baseball based on the 1860 rules of the game. Things like, you can catch a ball on a bounce and that's still an out. No spinning, you're ejected if you spit. And lastly, and this was my favorite, the batter gets to tell the pitcher where they want the ball. I want it right here, and the pitcher has to throw it there. So fun rules, we're doing an All-Star game. So each team in this league are sending representatives to play in an All-Star game. So we have the chance to view a vintage All-Star game prior to the actual All-Star game. This is, this should be a fun event, it's going to be held at UC at 1:00 on Saturday. It'll be on the Getler Field, which is both the soccer and track field. And if you're interested, at the same time, UC is also putting on a kids' carnival. And then at 3:00, they're having another celebrity softball game. So you have the opportunity to really get your baseball fix in on Saturday. On Sunday, at Burnet Woods, we're having a, thanks to the Cincinnati Neighborhood Games, we're doing a wiffleball home run derby. So this is going to be for adults and for kids. So adults out there, if you have a wiffleball swing that is beautiful, come down and you might be able to win the home run derby. That's going to start at 2:00, then 2 until 5:00. We're going to do a couple of rounds for kids, a couple of rounds for adults, and then have a winner's league, essentially, like a round robin. After that, at 5:00, in the, oh, in the, sorry, yes, thank you, Burnet Woods, in the meadow, we're at the big open field, next to the concrete line. So after that, at 5:00, we're doing a water balloon toss and for kids and families also. So it should be a fun activity on Sunday. That's, yes? Monday at the library, 3:00, is Kids Make Cake Pops. So it's a fun activity at the library, the new library, it's fantastic. And you can also have kids make cake pops, which is fantastic. Then lastly, the All-Star Game. We're having a viewing festivity? No, I can't say festivity. We're having a festivity? Where we're being able to watch a game on the plaza. And we're being very, we're being jovial here, but Major League Baseball has been very strict on the language we're allowed to use, on how to promote our events. Everything has to go up the black hole, down the black hole, and back up again before we can say anything. So viewing party is not allowed. It is not a viewing party on Tuesday, July 14th. But we'll have fun activities, I think we're having a beer booth that'll be there, beer trucks, food trucks. It'll be a fun festive atmosphere. Oh, there'll be piñatas. Again, we're doing a costume party, so if you show up in your best Reds and/or old-timey baseball outfits, there'll be a costume party. A photo booth, where you can have your picture taken, you know, in a fun decorative background. It should be a really good time. So if you're able to make it on the 14th for the All-Star Game, it would definitely be worth your while. But there, it's in the plaza, so it's very limited seating, for those of you obviously who know. And so that, those are the events that we have planned out. Let me ask my fellow committee members if I forgot anything first and foremost. Okay, so we're good. Thank you, thank you guys. So you'll be seeing signs like this all along Medlo promoting the event. They're going to put out press releases, the Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau, to promote it and make it a fun, kind of a community-building activity. But here's my ask, here's the next step. At the last meeting, we had talked about the budget and specifically funding. I had asked at that point to have a allocation for up to $2,000 spent in the event that we needed. Again, because Major League Baseball is peculiar, they have certain rules. And one of those rules we found out is, they are not allowing the money from the Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau to go towards a viewing party. Because they don't allow viewing parties, viewing party is taboo. So in order to be able to watch the game on the plaza, we need to be able to go to the organization and ask for funds to be able to fund. Per Adam's request, we made sure that this was a going event in Clifton where the funds from CTM would stay here to promote our neighborhood. I sent out an email to the board earlier today. We got three quotes, this was the best, for renting AD equipment to be able to watch the game on the plaza on Tuesday. That came out to be right at $821, so significantly less than $2,000 that I originally requested. So I would like to put forth a motion that we spend up to $900 on AD equipment specifically to watch the game in Clifton at my plaza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So I just want to make sure I'm okay with this, but I just want to make sure, what are the restrictions about actually projecting this game and having it on in public?
Good question. So as far as the restrictions, the big ones were marketing. For example, Arlins, the issue was, if they have beer vendors or signs for products that aren't the official sponsors of Major League Baseball, those signs have to be removed. For example, if a establishment sells Coca-Cola, you can see Coca-Cola from the street, that business can't be involved because it says Coca-Cola and Pepsi is the official sponsor of Major League Baseball. It was things like that. As far as for the game itself, there are none. We're allowed to show the game, we just can't use funds that came from the Visitors Bureau specifically to broadcast the game. We are using funds, to make sure we're, I'm being clear, for the beer booth, for the food trucks, for all the other, the piñatas, all the other activities that we're doing, we're allowed to do and we're allowed to use the funding from the Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's specifically broadcasting the game that they're putting on, that they want us to watch, that we're not allowed using money for. So it's bizarre. Any other questions? My motion was to allocate up to $900 to spend on AD equipment to watch the game. And to answer a problem real quick, Clifton Market has generously agreed to allow us to broadcast the game inside the market if we have to. We're also planning on using tents if it's only a light prison.
Thank you for that, Nicholas. Let's move on to our next area, which is Housing and Zoning.
Start with the orders. I did finally get ahold... Let's hear. I did finally get ahold of Patricia Milton over at the, at Avondale to discuss the order with Ruthur. She was not a big fan of the idea of annexing that side of the street. I talked to the city planners, a number of city planners about it. They said we'd have to, the residents in particular, would have to start lobbying the council to get the changes implemented. One thing that I did learn though, on May 15th, the Planning Commission decided that they weren't going to necessarily take into account the boundaries that we have in our bylaws, which include Burnet Woods, which would have given us, you know, we would have given, we would have been given information once something was implemented there or something had to come up. They are just considering that cuff and Coryville. So we will not be receiving official notice technically of anything in Burnet Woods. I'm going to follow up with that and find out more about that. I know it's never technically been in Clifton, but we've always wanted to be the say if something's going to go on there. As far as Whitfield, I believe the last update we had was before their meeting in May. There was a hearing, I haven't heard the upshot of that hearing yet. But, unless somebody else here is...
I heard, I didn't receive any notification like we normally do, but I heard from guests like Property that they were granting the variant on parking.
So there you have it. And then there, while I didn't participate in this, as I was the one who put the liquor license into the market, the board, the Housing and Zoning Board reviewed it and said they were fine with it. We as a board didn't make any motion on it, it was the, the last day was June 29th. So, what?
I don't think we could anyway.
This is the, another commander. So that's, what else have I got on there? Oh yeah, the review process. So I sent everybody the review process today. That's draft number two. If anybody can take a look at it, it's already actually been updated considerably by Malcolm Montgomery. So I'm going to send that version around tonight and after the meeting. So just, if, over the next few weeks, if you could just take a look at that, see if there's anything in there that sticks out to you or you want added or language that you think is, needs to be changed, please let me know. I'd like to make it for public review after the next meeting. I think we're really close to having that worked out. That's that.
Okay, thanks, Adam. We'll move on to the much anticipated... We'll move on to the much anticipated transportation updates. Do I need the microphone, or can anyone not hear me?
Oh, use the mic.
All right, I'll use the mic. I'll be brief, and I'm going to ask you to poke me when I, when I need to stop, with my talk to. So just to kind of bring everyone up to speed, Transportation Committee is new this year for CTM, and we've, we've been making progress, and one of the kind of things that we've kind of deliverables is actually just to kind of get a list of all the transportation issues going down in Clifton. So, we, Transportation Committee has met once, face to face, and we've gone through, tried to prioritize all the issues. So, what I'm going to do is just kind of, and we've had numerous, I've had a couple conversations with Michael Moore, who's the Director of Transportation Engineering for the city. So, if, I'd like to just go through and kind of give people, give brief updates on, on where we're at, I'm going to kind of focus on just the priority issues, and then if there's anything, if we have still time, I'd be happy to go into any more detail on any of these, or address some of the other matters. So, just kind of taking it from the top, the I-74 ramps the Central Parkway. Essentially, the, there's been the news, as many of you have may have read, but the mayor's changed course, as well as Cincinnati State, and they will be removing the ramps late spring or summer of 2016. The other priority is the Elmore to Central Parkway affair, that's been in the news as well. CTM had a position where we wanted to have insight, or input, and be an awareness to that process, as well as to make sure that it didn't adversely affect the community. And, actually, we just found out that there is a, there was going to be an open house regarding the official name of the Elmore to Central Parkway connector, that's going to be Tuesday, July 21st, 2015, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, at the Wynn Economic Learning Center on 1814 Drummond Avenue, now in South Cumminsville. So, if you're interested in that project, please attend there to...
I can put that up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. The other priority is the moving down to, CTM, as well as other, has basically requested that there be a crosswalk on Ludlow-Jefferson at Brookline in front of the new library, and this is under investigation, I like how they use that word, under investigation, with the Department of Transportation, and they are, and they said that they do understand the needs of that. So I guess it's, we just have to wait for things to, to kind of move forward on this. Yes?
Out of curiosity, is this just a regular crosswalk, or one that has the R that comes down that blocks the entire traffic?
Oh, we have, this is all I know. This is basically copying and pasting from an email from Michael Moore, so, they're aware of it, and I think they're, they're talking about it, so. So, let's see, what else? The speed limit on Vine, the resolution we passed this spring, essentially that's understudied with DOT, and they have actually, in June, did counts and captured data, they haven't released, I'm not aware of any data from that, or any decisions yet. And then the speed limit reduction requests on McGalton and Luther, those are understudied. There's, let me see, and, okay, well that actually has it, those are all the priority requests, I'll, if anyone has anything else that they're, like the status update on, or want more information on. All right, I didn't get voted.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Next up, we have Rama, before Rama gets started, we need to do a quick vote, because currently, Adam Highland is the Chair of our Parks Committee, Adam is handing over that role of Chair for the Parks Committee to Rama, and so, just to make it very complete, we need to vote on putting Rama in as Chair of the Parks.
Second. Oh, was that a motion?
I think.
I moved, we made Rama.
He's second. So, all in favor of Rama as Chair of Parks? Any opposed? Extentions? She is. She's now the Chair of Parks. So, as the newly appointed Chair of Parks, please give us your up.
I saw the agenda item, I think I just skipped it out there too, I saw the agenda item and came to a chair, because no one told me about it until I read the agenda.
With a surprise.
Yeah, with a surprise, so thank you. Well, if you haven't followed the news, Mayor Cranley has asked for supporters to put a tax levy option on the ballot in November of this year, and it all goes well, he would like to use the money which will cost Cincinnans with homes valued at $100,000, $35 per year. And, that will go to, it will be $35 for every $100,000 of property value, and the plan is to upgrade all City of Cincinnati parks. I spoke today with Steve Shuckman, who is in charge, who's Superintendent for the Cincinnati Park Board for Planning and Design, and he assured me that even though there are plans that have been drawn up as of 2006 for improvements of all city parks, as far as he is concerned, nothing will be done without first meeting with the community and asking for their input. So, he also said that I should tell the community that you should feel free to contact him directly via email or by phone to have any of your questions or concerns addressed. And, if anybody is interested in what exactly the Park Board proposed in conjunction with Uptown Consortium and the Park Board, sorry, and with the Uptown Consortium, I have a, I have something here that you can look at before you leave the meeting, and I will submit it for posting onto our website, and that, these plans were generated December 20th, 2006. Oh, here's, I had my daughter, my secretary, as enlarge the specific points. So. And, just Steve Shuckman also said that the restaurant idea would be the last one on his list of things to follow up on, so. I know there's not a lot of people in favor of that, but, just FYI, so, Cranley needs 6,000 votes, it's actually 5,900 votes to have it placed on the ballot, so, that's the full extent of what I have to say. I would like to reiterate the point that Adam made, that Clifton does not officially own Burnet Woods, it's actually Coryville that has Clifton, Burnet Woods is part of their zoning, and this was actually something that CTM and its founding papers zoned so as to not be associated with any problems that might result from having Burnet Woods be part of Clifton. So, if you would like more information on this, please review a document that was posted by Tom Laurie on the Clifton Chronicle website, the article was written by Martha Reynolds, and it's called "The City Suburbs and the Formation or the Foundation, Formation of Clifton Town Meeting," and it explains clearly why Clifton is zoned the way it is, why it begins south of, you know, Good Sam Hospital, and why it starts on this side of Brookline, and et cetera, et cetera. So, that's all I have to say, and I will be working with Dawn Fosnow, who, who's right here, who's from Coryville, she's on the Bishop side of, the other side of Bishop Street, which is in Coryville, and will be partnering with me on any input that the city seeks from people such as ourselves, so. Thank you, and in the meantime, please come to the park and enjoy it.
Thank you, Rama. Next up, we have Public Safety with Kevin.
So, we've reconstituted the Public Safety Committee this year, it's not a new thing for CTM, and we've sent out some various requests, either in the Clifton Chronicle, or in some emails or whatever, looking for people that might want to participate in this activity with us, and so far, the response has been underwhelming. And so we're going to continue to move on. I've met with Sergeant Volperding, our Public Liaison Officer with, or Sergeant, rather, he's over all of the officers of District Five, and he is willing to get kicked off again in September, October, so if you come to a future meeting, you'll hear about this again, and we would enjoy some community participation on this committee, because we believe that public safety is important, but we would like to see it demonstrated with some participation. In other words, I can't solo on this. The, the other thing that I have done is I've reached out to the leadership of the Clifton Moms Children's Study Group, because I feel that that is a very good source for getting feedback on public safety, and the expectation is, is that myself, and maybe some volunteers, will go to their September meeting, in an effort to have some discussion and get some feedback, so that we can carry that into the committee as we decide what should we be working on. Because quite frankly, I don't know what to be working on, I want to see what the community has to say. Other than the speed radar card, which you've probably seen my postings on, on that, I don't know if there's any questions from trustees.
Just, I think this is good, there is some overlap with transportation as far as, like, safety on the roads and sidewalks, so I think, I'm happy to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Schuer. I have been feeling Mr. Schuer various police reports from transportation accidents, because they do go in and in. Yep.
Sure, yeah, we have quick questions.
You are aware that we do have a Citizens Law Patrol in Clifton, and Citizens Law Patrol would be very happy to collaborate with you, we have in the past, and we're always recruiting people for Citizens Law Patrol, anybody interested?
Great, thank you. Next up, Ben, TriHealth Noise from Good Sam Hospital.
Can we switch back over?
Okay, so I'm going to read this kind of quickly because of some time things here, but basically, when it comes to Good Sam Hospital, noise concerns, prior to April of 2015, we were approached on this issue by Steve Slack, and later this year by Dave Gutman from Hollow Avenue. On April 21st, had a meeting between Gutman, myself, and Gene Barber, the Director of TriHealth Facilities, to talk about the problem. At that meeting, Gene said that there had been just a few complaints that they had heard. He said they measured the decibels, and chose a couple of charts in 2013 and 2014, and those measurements near the hospital were in the upper 40s and low 50s, which were well below the 55 to 60 decibel noise ordinance limit. He said that the HVAC equipment hasn't changed significantly, we've designed for many years, and it's well within, like, it's about middle-aged, basically within its design lifetime, and therefore, he said, he does not know why, he's not denying that the noise is worse, that he doesn't understand why exactly, and he says that the facilities people don't understand why it would be worse. I asked about the sound barriers, I've read about in the paper, that has been placed next to the HVAC systems in a grover's door, somewhere in the city where people were complaining about the noise, and he said that those barriers were at ground level, and that this solution is much more difficult on top of the tall building, which is where their stuff is now, due to the wind, because he said that they did a study and determined that they would require expensive structural changes in the roof of the building, in order to handle it if they put those types of barriers up there. He said that their HVAC contractors suggested instead raising the fan speeds, and that they measured a reduction of three decibels, which is about 50% of volume at the source when they did that, and then also raises the pitch of the sound, maybe the higher pitch more than makes up for it in terms of being annoying with any reduction in volume, so we don't know whether a higher, higher fan speed is better or worse. I suggested a summer test, since we were meeting in April and it was cold, when the noise is louder because of the air conditioning load, and where we try high and low fan speeds, were the residents aware of the time in which we're going to make the change, so that they could give input in addition to the readings, about whether the noise seems to be better or worse, the higher or lower thing. And then also had asked if Good Sam resource, be somewhere in the neighborhood, like on Hollow or Terrace, or something like that, to hear the noise from the perspective of the neighbors, which might be very different from at the location of the hospital. And suggested getting more readings on a day when the conditions would give a worse case. And finally, I suggested that the action might be needed even if it's below 55 dB, because I wouldn't want to create the impression that as long as it's within the noise ordinance, they're off the hook about doing anything, that if it's annoying, it's annoying, and there's still action required, even if it ends up meaning that it doesn't exceed a noise ordinance. Since then, a lot more people from other locations, on Whitfield, and Lyleburn, and Cornell, and other places have been voicing concerns, and so there is a new plan, as we started looking at this, and thought about creating a core group of residents to treat this almost like a project, or a strategy and action plan, a data collection plan, et cetera. First meeting will be tomorrow night, if interested in that, 7:00 PM on Hollow Avenue, I don't know if Dave Gutman's still here, it's at his home, but email me, I'm sohawden@gmail.com, because I don't want to invite people to his house, but email me and I will contact him, get additional people besides the ones who are already coming, so that's my email address, I'm sohawden@gmail.com. Some proposed principles and proposed milestones, but it's going to be up to the group as a whole, but this is kind of my going in thinking that I would be bringing up tomorrow. One principle is let's start with the Good Sam, with the assumption that Good Sam wants to be a Good Samaritan. So, assume that Good Sam wants to be a good neighbor, give them the data they need to help troubleshoot the problem, don't start with an adversarial relationship, give them the benefit of the doubt, and also keep the core group small enough to be effective, but look for diversity in skills, location, and perspective, so we don't want everything to be just Hollow Avenue, or everybody just here, we want some people from Cornell places, and we want us to get some diversity. And then these are some of the things that I'm thinking about as possible milestone activities, outlining the principles of strategy tomorrow, reviewing their strategy with David Mann's office, and I've already talked to David Mann, who will put about this, to get his input about the most effective ways to do this, then share the data, the data collection with Good Sam, as opposed to like keeping it to ourselves and then flooding them with a bunch of data. Say, we are going to collect decibel readings, we're going to do it this way, we're going to do it this manner, and the data collection shouldn't, I'm thinking, not just noise data, which is noise levels, pitch varying, and apparently iPhones can have excellent decibel reading things, and even pitch analysis, location, weather patterns, wind coming from Good Sam towards the Clifton versus away, then also community data, polling, but not necessarily enter adversarial positions, to estimate the proportion of people who've noticed the issue, on what streets, and how they rate the level of annoyance on a scale of one to five. You know, something where it doesn't seem like, oh, this is pitchforks, but this is more like, we want you to know that people are noticing it being bothered on Lickville, or being bothered on Ludlow, and to what extent. And then possibly finding HVAC experts who can consult with how can this problem be addressed. Imagine there'll be additional meetings of neighbors, and then at some point, then we would meet with Good Sam, at least once, to share the data we collected, and start talking about solutions and how they could be tested. And partner with them on that, so that when they're testing the solution, it's not just them hiring, hiring people to make measurements, it's also a bunch of people with iPhones and strategic locations, et cetera, who are jointly trying to verify that these solutions are needed.
Okay, thank you, Ben. We'll move on to the budget, Treasurers Report.
It was a low-volume one. We are seeing residual income from the spring, sorry, the early summer, Clifton Chronicle, and some residual income from the House Corps, so sponsorships, and advertising dollars in the brochure are continuing to trickle in, represented by the $4,900 for House Corps income, and a thousand, a little over $1,000 for Clifton Chronicle advertising, we had a net income of slightly over $6,000 for the past month. On the expense side, again, some residual expenses reimbursed... On the expense side, again, some residual expenses, reimbursements for House Tour, $1,062. And then $1,200 for editorial content for Clifton Chronicle. And then we did have one pastor expense. We are assisting the Clifton Foundation to put a plaque up at the Robasco Fountain. I think the plaque, the plaque is already in place. We have paid, we have cut the vendor who did, Ascend, who manufactured the sign up, and we're soon to be reimbursed from, my understanding is we're soon to be reimbursed for this one. So, the data might not come up in yet. So, if you could go up a little bit, we had a positive $2,700 for one. And we'll have final accounting probably next period for the House Tour as there are still money struggling in. And then just a snapshot of our balance sheets. We are in a very good cash position as we should be. This is the, of our three-year revenue cycle with the House Tour being our annual third year, we're seeing the high point. We have about $91,000 in cash. We have one outstanding liability toward the LLC, and we have membership equity of slightly under $91,000. That is the Treasurer's Report.
Motion to approve the Treasurer's Report.
All in favor?
Opposed? Treasurer's Report is approved. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we're moving on to trustee announcements. Do we have any general trustee announcements? Nope. Public Q and A, we have a few minutes here, or actually, one minute. It's 8:15.
Steve, you can just hand it over. I just want to know if anybody's here for Good Sam Noise. I'd like to be in front of you.
Steve, right behind you.
Right here. I'll meet you after the meeting.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, Malcolm, we'll work our way back and forth. Over here is...
If any community needs to be unified if it's going to get anything done, particularly City Council or anything else, what has happened to our community that we have another group, Ludlow 21, which is moving off in this direction? And it's a good argument to make that that's what's been done. But what's happened that that hasn't come through CTM? You know, I have proposed a lot of things here, and I've been knocked down on a lot of them. But I tried to work through CTM, yeah. I'd like to know whether our representatives, Morgan, have you ever brought the ideas from Ludlow 21 to CTM and tried to work them through this group? And I've attended every meeting until the last half dozen, saying this organization. Now, I don't remember you're running things here where people that voted against them were knocked down. And if I'm mistaken, correct me, but if I'm not mistaken, why hasn't Ludlow 21 been working through CTM?
It's been your port hunts. And you missed those meetings.
What, what, okay, what happened? They're knocked down, you proposed things, and worked it?
No, it was just, it was updates, things that have been done, worked on. They were your port hunts, updated on projects that are working on.
So, why pull off in another direction this year?
You can have to tell me all about it. Okay, anyone else that is interested, stick around.
Okay, over here, the woman right here in the dark shirt.
I'm Mary Rose Spencer, and I'm a member of CTM. I'm just really confused as to where we all stand there after the tie. The tie means that the motion failed, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So, I'm left to wonder, first of all, what is the relation? What is, what is CTM saying is your relation, our relationship with Ludlow 21? Morgan, you're saying that they're going off to be separate and they're going to incorporate, which then really confused me about why you participated in the vote to say we're not going to break off from Ludlow 21. Not just you, I mean, only you because you were, it seemed to be a part of that. That confused me even more because you're saying the organization is breaking off from CTM, but then there's no vote, and you vote not to break off from Ludlow 21. So, as a person sitting here, I'm left to wonder, oh, what does that mean?
I don't think it's a good idea. I told Ludlow 21 it's a bad idea.
So, you think this is the only reason. So, what is the relationship between CTM and Ludlow 21? And can any group of people just pop up and say, well, I think I want this to happen on Ludlow, and we're going to do this on the Plaza, which I, by the way, enjoy. But I mean, how does the legitimacy for these groups, where does it come from? And how does CTM relate to that? And I think that's still, all has to be very worked out. And I'm for people, as individuals, saying whatever they want, wherever they want. But when you represent yourself as a person representing an organization, then you get to clarify, I'm speaking as an individual here. And you aren't going to say, I'm speaking, here's my opinion, and I'm a member of this, and I'm on that committee. Because then you're really giving the impression that you're speaking for the group. If you want to be part of the group and speak for yourself, I said make that very loud and clear so everybody understands that. And I don't think that's what's happened in the past. And that's part of the hard feeling, I think, that's what we're about. So, that's, so what do you want, what were you going to go?
There are a lot of questions. We'll take one more over here, one more over there, and then we'll...
I emailed and asked to be put on the agenda. So, you know, I will come back to you at the next meeting. No request to get me put on the agenda.
I don't know if we missed you, Bing.
She missed the topic was, it's Dawn Fosnow, right?
Right.
Yeah, so he wanted to know about the annexation, which trustee Helen spoke about, and also to speak about Burnett Woods. And so, Burnett Woods was...
Okay, so, okay, that's fine.
Not to say that we can't continue to talk, but, yeah.
Dawn, just to follow up, I've got, I've been working on some of your questions, but I...
The big thing is, I was, I'm approaching you with the idea of, I think you need a representative to come to the Correville Community Council meetings because we overlap, and CUP is not doing all of it. They don't have true representation. So, I was just proposing, wanting to propose tonight that I think you ought to consider that because we do have overlapping information, like the noise, like Burnett Woods. And you don't have any voice...
Do we have a liaison for, about the neighbors?
The neighbors of Ludtown. The neighbors of Ludtown. We do have representation on it. So, we are trying to deal with Abundia, all of our border organizations are members of the neighborhood of town here. We do talk about cross, cross-border...
We can get you into contact with our interview liaison on CTM. Yeah, Joyce Rich. I got to go over here.
I'm Jim Gatt, I live at Brookline in Jose. And I just wanted to say that I got one of the petitions that I'm supporting, the Putting on the Ballot, the Parks Initiative. That will be hopefully on the ballot in November. And as you all know, funds from that will be all distributed through the park boards. It's not a city, it's through the park board. We'll make all of the final approvals of any funding. And as you know, Burnett Woods is on the slate to be a big recipient of that. So, if anybody would like to sign the petition just to get the issue on the ballot, I have that with me tonight. Thank you.
Quick, quick. All right, one more.
House Tour final report, we didn't hear it.
We have the table it for time, and we, as Mike said, we have a couple of expenses still coming in. So, I want to do a complete...
More of its income, we're getting, we're still getting payments for the brochures. We haven't got...
How many people did we have compared to the previous?
We had roughly about 800. Now, with our volunteers and everybody else, we probably hit close to 1,000 people involved that day. So, I think the attendance, 17,000 approximate net income. I think it's very good. I think we had a good year, and I think, just quickly, you know, the number of houses was a little bit lower than the past tour, but I think it was a good balance. And I want to have all the right numbers for you next meeting. But I think we had between 800 and 1,000 people touring because our volunteers toured.
I'll do one quick question here.
We got to end because they're going to boot us.
So, anyone who's finding Mary Rose's question?
She can have her send it in, and we'll respond to it. Yeah, well...
I think it required more board discussion and vote.
Well, wait, let's get it on the agenda.
I mean, it's an active... An active debate amongst the board right now. We can't tell you the answer because we're still figuring it out ourselves. And, you know, I abstained from the vote tonight because I don't feel like the debate has, I've seen the whole debate and understanding it completely. So, we can't answer yet.
But if a question wants to be sent in, that can be sent in.
Oh, so, the question is not, doesn't mean anything, you have to send it in? That protocol?
No, no, that's not it. In the interest of time, there's always the next meeting.
We'd like to see it more. We'd like to see it back. Come on, please, go back.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank it.
All in favor?
I...
I've never heard adjournments.
Thank you.